Hello, and thank you for patiently waiting for everything to get into place. One thing we need to do very quickly is just do a roll call of planning board members. I'll just start with the ones that are in the room first. Linda.
Yeah.
Sue.
Here.
Mark.
Here.
And I know we have two participating over Zoom. Haley.
Here.
Andrew.
Here.
And this is Nathan. I am here. Thank you very much. All right. And I think we can. We need to just start right into this. Yep. Hopefully, this might still works. Okay, good. Hello, I'm Nathan Bossett. I'm the current Chair of the Planning Board, and I thank you for joining us here in the townhouse or from the comfort of your home. And again, I thank you for being patient as we got everything set up. All of us appreciate you attending this public hearing process, and I know that each one of us presenting this evening look forward to your engagement and feedback. So with that, I'll start us off with our first proposal, which is Article 33, and relates to a zoning bylaw amendment to Section 4.5.4, which defines restaurant business uses. Section 4.7.1, which defines prohibited uses within Concord. And Table 4, which defines minimum parking requirements for various principal use scenarios. Next slide, please. While talking about this bylaw amendment proposal, you're going to hear the F word frequently. No, not that one. We're talking about the other F word in Concord, fast food. But let's address the elephant in the room. This proposal is intended to facilitate the growth of our type of fast food, not the kind you might be thinking of. As we walk through the proposal, please keep that in mind, and we'll come back to these Concord favorites a little later. Next slide, please. In simplest terms, here's what's being proposed. You can think of it as being in two key parts. We're looking to remove the prohibition to fast food from Section 4.7.1. Take that definition that's found there and add that to Section 4.5.4, and revise the parking requirement for smaller fast food restaurants that's found in Table 4 of parking requirements. In addition, we'd be adding the term drive-through as a prohibited use under Section 4.7.1. Next slide, please. I won't spend time reading through here, but essentially we're removing the fast food prohibition, what's outlined or lined out there, and fast food definition while inserting drive-through as a prohibition to better encapsulate what was originally intended with the the use of drive-in. This will also help to mitigate the growth of more traditional franchise-style fast food establishments as having drive, having a drive-through is typically a key component of those. Next slide, please. So we'll be adding the definition of fast food into Section 4.5.4 as a third definition to what a restaurant business use would be, and that's displayed here on the screen for you to look at. I'll give you a second. Next slide, please. And as I earlier mentioned, we'll also be amending the Table 4 regarding minimum parking for a restaurant. The proposal would add language to define parking requirements for fast food restaurants that may have no seats at all, right? So if we're talking about a walk-up restaurant that may have fewer than three seats, which was what was previously the defining point. Next slide, please. The existing prohibition was adopted in 1981. And as it was explained, then it was in part to avoid generating significantly more traffic than other types of commercial uses, which would create congestion and potential safety hazards connecting with franchisers who promote standardized, highly recognizable building and signage, generating noise, smells, lights, and litter, and other attract and often attracting loiterers. Essentially, it was an attempt to avoid the type of fast food you may have originally been thinking of, you know. Oh, next slide. It doesn't work if I have to say next slide in it. This brand of fast food. Well, maybe not the, not literally this brand, but bonus points to those who recognize it. I'm pretty sure this one's limited to to Queens, New York. Next slide, please. But since 1981, we've learned that some of the assumptions from 1981 were wrong and have implemented various bylaws to mitigate the growth of what's more commonly thought of when it comes to fast food establishments. We've implemented a a formula business bylaw for town centers. We've, we know from a number of American Planning Association studies that have found that fast food restaurants do not generate more or less traffic than sit-down restaurants. The caveat here is that a drive-through or a drive-in would, but that is being added as a prohibition, so that is not included in this. Adoption of the Towns polystyrene polystyrene prohibition in 2016 limits the type of waste that would be produced by a newer restaurant. And the introduction of the lighting bylaw requires, as as part of site plan review, is a requirement for dark sky fixtures and a prohibition of light spillover. There's been, in addition, there has been no evidence that existing fast food restaurants in Concord attract loiterers or create more noise or smells than any other equivalently sized restaurant. Next slide, please. Part of the barrier to entry for restaurant in Concord isn't just the 12 seats or the proportion of business that is that is takeout to avoid the fast food prohibition. It's that once they do have meet that threshold, it then triggers several other requirements. They must construct the unisex handicap accessible bathroom. They pay into a sewer improvement fee, and currently that would mean 12 would be over $40,000. There's the minimum parking requirement that we were just talking about earlier, and there's additional requirements at the state and local level for plumbing codes. Any one of these could be an instrumentable hurdle for someone attempting to open a small eatery in Concord. Next slide, please. So why change the bylaw? If we want to help smaller restaurants to be able to succeed and taking roadblocks out of their way is a step in the right direction. Amending these aspects of the bylaw will allow for small restaurants similar to those Concord favorites, which we enjoy today. It would allow for them to open without the additional financial burden that comes from opening a restaurant with more than 12 seats or less than 50% of the business coming from dine-in patrons. Next slide, please. The reality and the reality in Concord is and can be different, which brings us back to these Concord favorites. This proposal is not about the typical formula business type fast food chain that you may have been thinking about at the beginning of this. There are already bylaws in place that limit their access, and they have the resources to overcome the financial limitations I mentioned earlier. This proposal is about adding to the vitality of our town by making it easier for the next generation of Concord favorites to open. So with that, you can go to the next slide. Or leave it on that one. We can always look at those. I'm open to questions or comments, please.
Henry Day in 58 Everett Street, speaking for myself as usual. I have one question about the parking requirement, and that is that what I'd like to know whether adding the additional parking space for 300 square feet of gross floor area of the restaurant would actually increase the parking requirement for some of the current restaurants? Because if, because that counts kitchen space, storage space, office space, and adds additional parking requirements over and above what now is based on the number of seats and the number of employees. So that I, I think that we do, number one, need to look at whether that would. I understand what the attempt is to impose a parking requirement on restaurants that don't have seats. But it also applies to restaurants that do have seats. My other observation on that is that parking requirements are really not a very effective way of controlling anything in the business districts because parking requirements are always waived. And the only question that ever comes before the planning board is not, do we qualify for compliance with the parking bylaw? But how many do we need to get exceptions for?
Right. Yeah, so I, I think Elizabeth, you want to jump in here, but I believe it would not be retroactive to existing restaurants, first of all, and then I, I take your point about in-town centers where often, I mean, other members of the planning board can tell you parking is something that we hear a lot about. So parking relief would continue to be a normal part of of review, but I don't know if there's. Yeah. Do we have, we have someone coming to the mic while that's happening? Is there anybody online that has their hand raised?
Hi, thank you. Jennifer Schinaman, 712 Monument Street, also the Chair of the Economic Vitality Committee. I'm really encouraged to see this warrant come to the public, and thank you very much for putting all the thought and effort into it. I think this is a really vital key to allowing us to not just have a more diverse and interesting range of things for our own citizenry, but it's a vital part of continuing to attract and properly service the visitors that come to Concord every year. We saw with the pandemic that some of the real creativity of some of the folks that you pointed out, like New London, that little takeout window just really allowed them to thrive in a new way. And on a more practical note, when we look at the income that the town gets from meals tax, having an option to attract a larger number of small restaurants that can service a broader population ultimately would have a beneficial financial impact on the town as well. So very much in favor, and thank you for putting the work into this.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom? Not having anybody on Zoom and not seeing anyone else in the room. I think we can move on to our next one. Thank you very much.
You could put up the slides for Article 34, please. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Linda Miller, and tonight I am representing the planning board to discuss Article 34, a zoning bylaw amendment to allow mobile food establishments, often referred to as food trucks in town. Next slide, please. This article will allow food trucks to be licensed by the Town's Health Division and Police Department. License fees will offset these costs. Food trucks will be temporary and limited in number and location, except if special permits are granted by the town manager or select board, such as for town events. Next slide, please. Let's define a mobile food establishment. It is a food service operation as permitted under the Massachusetts Retail Food Code, which is operated from a movable, motor-driven, or propelled vehicle, portable structure, or watercraft that is able to change location. What is not a mobile food establishment? Caterers that bring food to your business or residence, whether they're in a truck or not. Food or meal delivery services like Instacart or DoorDash. Next slide, please. There are three portions to this amendment. Let's go through the proposed bylaw section by section. Part one, as a section to our zoning bylaw that would define mobile food establishment, as we've just discussed. Next slide, please. The introduction in Part 2A established that food trucks will be treated uniformly throughout Concord, are temporary rather than permanent, and are restricted to private property, except when approved by the town manager on municipal property or the select board on public roadways. Next slide, please. Part 2B recognizes that the Health Division and Police Department are responsible for regulating and enforcing food truck practices. All other permits or licenses needed by the trucks will still apply. For example, the signage bylaw and the polystyrene bylaw. Next slide, please. The next two sections, C and D, refer to limitations on food trucks. First, food trucks can operate at the same location for a maximum of 52 days per calendar year. Hypothetically, this could be every Monday throughout the year to provide lunch to a school or medical building, or daily Monday through Friday for 10 weeks during fall foliage or CSA season at a farm stand. It's a limited duration intended to be economically attractive to food entrepreneurs who will invest in trucks, pay license fees to the town, and comply with our regulations, hopefully, to operate profitably in Concord. Next slide, please. This next section limits the number of food trucks on private property at any one time to two. Relief from this requirement can be granted by the Board of Appeals by special permit if they find it is without substantial detriment to the neighborhood or risk to public safety. A special permit application to the board does require notification of a butters and a public hearing. Next slide, please. Currently, Concord's established restaurants cannot receive a license from the Town Health Division if they would like to operate a food truck based from their location here to serve either destinations in or outside of Concord. This portion of the amendment provides them with the ability to park their food trucks on their restaurant's property. Next slide, please. And for the last item in Section 2, you may have noticed that your children or grandchildren in Concord do not have the opportunity to participate in one cherished summer tradition, the ice cream truck. When you and your kids hear the ice cream truck jingle coming down the road, Article 34 will allow you to enjoy those creamsicles and ice cream bars in the summer. This third, next slide, please. This third section and last of the article amends the restaurant definition in the bylaw to include the accessory use of mobile food establishments. This amendment is needed to allow a restaurant to get the required license from the Health Division to operate a food truck out of the restaurant, such as reasons to be cheerful. Next slide, please. To recap, Article 34 will allow food trucks in Concord a maximum of 52 days a year. Any food trucks on municipal property or town roads must be authorized by the town manager or select board, respectively. They will be limited to two on any one property unless approved by the Board of Appeals, will be licensed by Public Health and Police, and follow all other necessary permits, and will allow restaurants accessory use of a food truck which may be parked on the restaurant's property, and also allow ice cream talk trucks on public roads. Next slide, please. So why change the bylaw? To provide more variety and choice of food options to Concord citizens and visitors, to support our restaurants who could profit from additional food service options and house their food trucks in Concord, support entrepreneurial food service businesses that might want to locate in Concord, and create a permitting process to protect the public health and safety of food trucks in Concord. In conclusion, we believe that Article 34, a zoning bylaw amendment for mobile food establishments record represents progress for Concord. Thank you, and I'll be glad to take your comments and attempt to answer any questions.
Matt Johnson, 21 Witherspoon Street, member of the Select Board, but speaking for myself. So I note that this is applicable to all zoning districts, including residential.
So. Well, yes, but you couldn't open a.
But then I could have, so I could invite two food trucks to my driveway in 52 days a year, I could have food trucks operating on 21 Witherspoon Street. And then at the end of the 51, 52 days, my neighbor, who probably would want to get in on this action, he could put those same two food trucks in his driveway for 52 days. And then across the street, the Stokes, they could, they could put them in for the next 52 days. I'm just, and and my neighbors would love this. There'd be all this traffic and people lining up to get all this great food in my neighborhood. I mean, is that what we could do?
Well, I, I think we were thinking more of you might have a couple of food trucks if you had a graduation or some other celebration at your home, but.
But my, my house is close to West Concord Center, and you know, I could probably, if I advertise well enough, I could probably get a lot of people right there. There are a lot of businesses in the area. I'm just trying to understand like what the business opportunity for me is here. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for making that point. Yes, sir.
Hi, David Rosenbaum, 114 Deer Grass Lane. I'm also a member of the Board of Parker Carlisle Neighbors, which is a social group here. I want to say thank you to the work you all for the work that's gone into putting this together. I think the addition of food trucks would be an excellent thing for providing other opportunities for dining and food in different locations in Concord. I think that, you know, we really ought to be considering this. The interesting exception just described perhaps is an aberration as well. I can't imagine many people who want to park food trucks in their driveway, but I would love to see them, you know, in West Concord, in downtown Concord, and maybe other locations around town as alternatives to, you know, trying to go to the local restaurants or things like that for lunch and other times during the day. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mary Hartman. I live at 16 Concord Green. I'm a member of the Select Board. I'm speaking for myself. I think this is a great idea, and one of the benefits that I didn't see on your slide is it's a way for restaurateurs to come to Concord and see if they have a market. And if they do, then they could possibly open up Frickin' Mortar a location, and we need more restaurants in town. So I think, and different restaurants. So I think that's another benefit of allowing people to come on somewhat of a trial basis. As far as the objection we hear as far as bringing competition into town and threatening existing restaurants, I think research has shown that protectionist policies don't make good economic policy. And in fact, competition strengthens the businesses in town, and we saw that with, in our own town, we saw that with Cafe Nero. Remember, we thought that when Cafe Nero comes in, there goes Main Street Cafe, there goes Hot Coffee, and yet all three of them are thriving. So I think this would bring in some healthy competition, and it also brings in some more meals tax, as Jennifer mentioned earlier, which is always good to have in our coffers. Thank you.
Just, just to clarify on the tax. Could you move to the next slide, please? After the question and comments, or one more. So the tax payments by if trucks were operated out of Concord, those tax payments would come to Concord and improve our revenues. So yes, it would be hopefully a stimulus to our local businesses to create their own trucks and serve citizens of Concord or go outside of our town, and then those revenues would come into Concord. But for trucks that are based in other towns and they come into Concord, the revenues that they would raise by taxes would go to their home base. It would not come into Concord. So just so we. Yeah. Okay. Yes, sir.
Stephen Verrell, 415 Plainfield Road. Verrell Farm. I just wanted to thank you for doing this also. We'd be very interested in having a food truck we could use primarily on our property with various events we have, or maybe providing some extra refreshment during strawberry picking or whatever. But we're very much in favor of this.
Thank you. I'll be first in line for your food truck. Any additional questions in the room? I think there's some on, oh, one more.
No, we'll take, we'll, we'll take a few from online first, and then we'll come back to in the room real quick, since they've been waiting. The first one I see is Parashar Patel.
This is Parashar Patel, 397 Sudbury Road, Member of the Finance Committee, but speaking as myself. I think this is a good, good idea, and thank you for bringing this up and thinking about it. I guess I had two questions. One is, did I hear something about public hearings and the butters being notified? So in other words, I'm just kind of curious, what's the process either the town manager or the select board would use to authorize food trucks at certain locations? That's one question, I guess. And then the second question is around the fees. I'm kind of curious, who would be responsible for setting the fees?
Did you hear his questions? Sure, I just didn't.
So the first question, correct me, was the actual process. So for a private property owner who wants to have, you know, more than two food trucks at, you know, on their property, the Board of Appeals special permit process is an established special permit process. There's a legal notice published in the paper. There's notification of a butters, and a public hearing is held. The process that the town manager would use for municipal property or the process that the select board may use to authorize a food truck on a public road has not been established yet. So should this bylaw pass, and then we would work with the town manager and the select board to establish a process, and at that time establish that application fee process. For a special permit, the fee is $200, you know, to file the application. The Board of Health already has established fees for food trucks because they license food trucks for the town of Lincoln.
I see. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the next one I see is James Channing, or yes?
Hi, my name is James Nager, 75 Channing Road. Thank you for recognizing me, and thank all of you for your hard work on this. On this. I'm being asked to start my video. There we go. Sorry for the interruption. I don't think I'm that much to look at, but I'm happy to cooperate. Look, I, I like the idea of bringing these food trucks into Concord. They add some variety and they add some vibrancy as they do in surrounding towns. But I think this law and regulations needs to be, forgive me if I'm wrong, but a little better thought out. For one, I, I think there are clear locations where somebody could set up shop and not interfere with current businesses. We've got some large parking lots and both sides of Route 2 where where people could set up. I would, if I, by the way, I'm not a victual, victual, or I'm not a local business person. But if I had a dental office in the center of town or a coffee shop in the center of town, I wouldn't want a food truck in front of my business blocking traffic and for for my beloved business. So I, I think it would be possible for the public safety officers in town to. it would be possible for the public safety officers in town to offer some suggestions about where you could put a food truck. You know, schools may be a wonderful place for that as well. The, the other thing I would say is that we, we are requiring brick and mortar stores to have handicap bathrooms, et cetera, but we have no requirements on mobile operations. And I think if they were in designated areas, they could certainly chip in and help provide sanitary facilities. Because twelve people can certainly go to a food truck, you know, in a half hour's time. That's what I have to say. I think it's a great idea. I'd like to see it, and I think it needs a little better thought. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. I was gonna say thank you for your comment. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want to go back to in the room? We'll come back to. We'll go back to in the room.
Thank you. Stefan Bader, Seven River Street. The question of frequent use in one location made me think a little bit more also. Is the fifty-two days per property or per truck? In other words, can I have fifty-two different trucks on fifty-two sequential days and then I'm done for the year? Or I'm not trying to shoot down Mr. Johnson's proposal, but I'm trying to think of some way of proactively constraining his profit-making opportunities. So I, I guess the question is, because I can see a location like in front of Brookside Square, there's, there's an empty lot that used to be an auto lot. And I can see that that would be a great location, better than Mr. Johnson's driveway, to have two food trucks or something every weekend. And I, I don't know if that's, it sounds like that would fit in the fifty-two limit as it exists. Putting that question out there now rather than later.
No, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your trying to help parse the wordage here. Thank you. So it's, it's limited to property, not to truck? As it states, we believe as it states now. Yes.
Henry Day, a member of this light board, but still speaking for myself.
Certainly.
Please do not give us another permit that we have to issue. We are asked to issue all kinds of permits for all things which, under which we have no expertise, whatever, whether it be moving a light pole or putting in a gas line or you know, stringing an internet cable. We're, we're trying to rationalize our workload, and at least I personally, as a member of the board, would appreciate us not being given the task of issuing one more type of permit, especially when there are no procedures or criteria established for the granting of such permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we, I see one other online. Ed Tiedemann.
Yeah, hi, Ed Tiedemann, six fifty-six Barrett's Mill Road. I do think we do need to address Matt Johnson's usage on private property. And I think that needs to be something I'd be quite concerned about my neighbor setting up something where he could have a food truck every weekend of the year on, on his property or something like that in, in a residential area or something like that. Of course, if he wants it for a wedding or something like that, I would be concerned. But, but I really do think we need to address that case. Otherwise, I'm very much for this. I mean, I think what Steve Verrel was talking about doing, having things for other special town events, the parades, April nineteenth, you know, is all a very good time to have these food trucks, plus, of course, many of the businesses across the road and on, along Route Two could certainly use a food truck because there are not particularly good food facilities there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go back to the.
Thank you. I'm Ian Calhoun. I live at three sixty-two Barrett's Mill Road, and I own and operate eighty-three Restaurant. And I just wanted to speak briefly on, I think, the benefit, you know, for the restaurants that are already here somewhere toward Mr. Rappert Ford, but to kind of really bring it to life during the pandemic at my restaurant. I popped up a more casual restaurant called Custer's Roast Beef and Seafood, which I operate a few locations of in Boston. And it was really popular. People enjoyed it. It brought a cuisine to town that's not being represented, you know, elsewhere. And, you know, in the, in a practical sense, now that I'm heading back towards what we kind of did before the pandemic, it's not possible to operate this smaller, kind of fun, quick-serve restaurant out of my full-service restaurant, but people enjoyed it, and I could foresee using this, the accessory use component of this program for my restaurant. So just for those who are kind of thinking about this and how a restaurant might use it. And it really does, I, I think it really does, which was highlighted in this and in the kind of small format restaurant presentation earlier about how these opportunities do create room for entrepreneurs, and it's not a room that I need right now. I'm fortunate to have kind of made it past the early hurdles, but there's a lot that can be done in a really small space, and, you know, many of the food trucks that operate in Boston or cities, they offer actually really interesting cuisines, and usually in a very narrow slice. You know, people are not coming in and running a full delicatessen out of their food truck. They're bringing in a cuisine that, you know, is pretty, pretty narrow and focused. And it would be something that certainly I would be interested in if it, if it moves forward.
Thank you. That's very encouraging. Some additional questions? Shall I call on Pamela Drit?
Pamela Drit, thirteen Concord Green. I'd like, look forward to this too. And in fact, if it's very successful, would there be ways that we could allow the restriction to be lifted, or would we just need to have the planning board bring to town meeting a revision of the the bylaws? That's the question. Oh. So, so that if, say, there's a vacant lot, parking lot, that isn't being well utilized, and a food truck sets up there, and it becomes a very nice, attractive thing, and we really love it, but oops. It's now gone past the number of days that are limited, and now it has to leave. And we're all very sad. Is there a way around that?
So there would not be a way around that. What it would require is an amendment to come back to town meeting the following year. So I, I think what you would be looking at is, should this bylaw pass all of the restrictions? What works, what doesn't work? What may have been, you know, forgotten or not addressed, or, you know, is something too restrictive? Then the following year, the planning board could get input on amending the bylaw and bring an amendment back to town meeting.
There's an additional hand up on Zoom, but I cannot, I'm sorry, I don't, I can't read the individuals.
This is Parashar Patel, three ninety-seven Sudbury Street, again. Following up on Henry Day's comments, a member of Finance, but speaking for myself. I'm kind of curious, what's the practice in other towns, or maybe even the city of Boston, around food trucks setting up on public roadways? Is that? Do they need approval, or how does that work? Because I, I'd be a little concerned if food trucks sort of set up in the middle of Main Street downtown. For example, if there's no process to authorize that type of setup. Because you also, well, the food might be great, you've also got the noise pollution from, you know, the trucks and generators.
We've surveyed a number of cities and towns in terms of their practices, and they are very diverse. So what goes on in Boston doesn't go on in Wayland, for example. So I, I, I can't really characterize that completely, but in general, there, there are constraints. And I think that we felt on this first pass that a very logical constraint was in terms of what was to have private property and individuals have food trucks on their private property more legally than to have them on municipal property, which would be reviewed by the town manager, and then on any roadways would be the most stringent review by the select board. And I think that, that was sort of how we saw the progression in terms of those issues. I, I would agree that the roadways in town, some of them might be suitable, and under some circumstances, they might be suitable for certain town events like Patriots' Day or the holiday tree lighting, then perhaps on, but, but that wasn't a judgment that we wanted to put into an article, and it wasn't a judgment that normally would fall under the purview of the planning board. And we felt that the groups that were most sensitive to the will of the people or the town manager and the select board, and I, I think that was our initial choice and rationale behind that, but I, I I'm getting some, some very valuable feedback here that, that needs to be thought through with regard to this amendment. But, but I think that again, and, and there are large towns like Boston, Somerville, Cambridge, that actually have groups that manage this. And if the select board wanted to set up another committee to make the judgment on food trucks, they could consider that. And I'm sure there might be a lot of people volunteering to be part of that committee, so. So we can continue to think about this.
I appreciate that. I was just encouraged to make sure we do have a process, regardless of whether it's a select board or, or a committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions in the room or online? If not, thank you very much. Oh. Oh, there's one more in here in the room. Sorry.
Steve Verrel again, four fifteen Plainfield Road. Just a suggestion that might make it have broader appeal might be to have a lower limit on residential property.
Thank you.
Thank you for everybody leaving. Please make sure to exit the building because the sound travels up into here.
Good evening. I'm Sue Felshen. Article thirty-five proposes an amendment to the zoning bylaw regarding combined business residence developments. This kind of development is a use in various business districts that combines retail or other business uses with housing. Think a traditional mom and pop store with an apartment or two above, but there can also be larger developments with multiple businesses and more housing units. I want to start off by asking you to think to yourself, how many housing units has Concord seen constructed as part of a business residence project since 2010? I'll give you a second to think what the number might be. Fifty units? If you guessed that high, you might be thinking of Brookside Square on the Harrell Street or Concord Commons on Conan Street, but those are a little older, and also they were developed as combined industrial business residence uses. So less than fifty, maybe thirty units, twenty? Next slide, please. The actual number of combined business residence housing units created since 2010 under section four point two point three of the zoning bylaw is just two. Two units were created as part of the Concord Outfitters project in West Concord. Two in thirteen years, and neither of them are affordable units. I'm pretty new on the planning board, but the chair could tell you what gets talked about the most when a project comes before the board. Okay, it's parking. But next up is affordable housing and workforce housing. Housing for the most vulnerable among us, and also housing for hard-working teachers and your favorite restaurant server. Housing for the young family who wants to live in the town they grew up in, and housing for seniors who want to stay within the community they love, and who may be on a fixed income or just don't want to manage the upkeep of a large house. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, the planning board set out to rethink how to achieve the town's goals. I'll summarize the proposed changes, and then I'll go through why the board thinks these changes will benefit our town. The first change only applies to projects of ten or fewer total housing units. That's to change the required percentage of affordable housing in small projects. The rest of the changes apply to projects of any size. They are to incorporate in lieu payments for fractional units of less than a half. To specify whether affordable units are provided at eighty percent of area median income, a hundred percent or a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. To require a mix in the number of bedrooms in all units, and to require a mix in the price or rent of market rate units. Next slide, please. The current bylaw is not working. For four or more total units, it requires that at least twenty percent of the units be affordable, and any fraction of a unit rounds up to a complete unit. That may sound good because we should get more affordable units. But the feedback we've received time and time again is that the affordable housing requirement is uneconomical. So these projects don't get built. Or they get built with four, than, fewer than four units, which again works against the town's goals to see more mixed-use developments that are inclusionary in nature. And people aren't just saying this. We have thirteen years of evidence to show it really isn't worth building. That includes a project in, in West Concord that was approved in 2020 that includes eight units of housing, two being affordable, and that hasn't gotten built. The applicant has been unable to secure funding for the project and is now looking at increasing the project size to twenty dwelling units. With twenty units under four affordable units would be required. This bylaw amendment proposes that for projects of ten or fewer units, the affordable percentage would be reduced to ten percent. In addition, for projects of any size, whenever less than half a unit is required, the project applicant could make a payment in lieu into the town's affordable housing fund. I'll say more about that shortly. Ten percent of four or fewer units is less than half a unit, so a payment in lieu would be allowed for these smallest projects. For five to ten units, half a unit or more would be required, which rounds up to one full unit. Larger projects gain from economies of scale, so the bylaw would continue to require the twenty percent of units would be affordable. But it would allow an in lieu payment for any fraction of less than half a unit. Applicants would see the benefit in providing an extra market rate unit plus a small payment in lieu. Even though resulting unit would be market rate, we'd still gain a moderate-sized unit in a town center plus a little money for the Affordable Housing Trust. As you can see, this mostly reduces the requirement for small projects, but it actually makes a slight increase in the smallest projects by requiring a very small fractional payment in lieu. Next slide, please. Now, about these payments in lieu, they would be paid into the town's municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Money in this account can be used to build new affordable housing from scratch or to convert existing market rate housing into affordable housing, or to change the level of affordability. I'll say more about that in a moment. The fractional payment would be calculated based on the average market sales price for all of the market rate dwelling units in the development. Next slide, please. State law defines three levels of affordable housing based on area median income or AMI. Eighty percent, a hundred percent, or a hundred and twenty percent. Housing at eighty percent or lower is allowed to be included on the town's subsidized housing inventory or SHI and contributes to the Chapter B percentage. This is sometimes called capital. This is sometimes called capital A affordable housing to distinguish it from more general, any kind of affordable housing. The current bylaw definition, oh, excuse me, when I said a moment ago that money in the affordable housing trust could be used to change the level of affordability, I meant that we could use these funds to convert a unit at one hundred or one hundred and twenty percent AMI into a unit at eighty percent AMI so that it could be listed on the forty B SHI. The current bylaw definition uses lowercase affordable, and it means that units don't have to appear on the SHI. The proposal is at least half of affordable units from now, if the amendment is passed, would have to be capital A affordable. Next slide, please. Concord has a lot of large houses, but not very many small dwellings. Right now, units in combined business residence projects can be any size and market rate units can be any price. This means they all tend to be large and expensive because that's what's more profitable to build. The amendment would require a mix in the number of bedrooms and a mix in the sales price or rental rate. This would increase Concord's housing diversity. Next slide, please. Concord's 2022 housing production plan shows a great need for small dwellings at every price point, especially near town centers. The current bylaw isn't working for small projects. They get built without housing or they don't build move forward at all. If this article passes, the expected impact on the town would be small because the article's biggest change would be to small projects. It would lead to a modest number of new units and a few new affordable units. The town has such a great need for small and affordable housing units, though, that any increase would help. In addition, the changes in this article would require half of affordable units in these projects to count toward our forty B percentage. Next slide, please. Two units in thirteen years. Does that represent our values as a town? Does it represent our commitment to a diverse community of all ages, income levels, and family situations? The planning board doesn't think it does and hopes you don't either and will support the passage of this amendment. Thank you. Next slide, please. Now we open up the floor for questions and comments.
Okay, so Matt Johnson, 21 Winthrop Street, and I'm not planning to put a residence business combined thing in my on my property, not like the last thing. But here, I'm first curious about the ten percent up to ten units, and then it's twenty percent after. So let's assume a property is twenty units. I assume that that it's sort of like progressive tax rates, you know, that you 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 don't suddenly at eleven units have to have two affordable. You 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 need one plus a fraction and you need the additional two. You you need a second unit by the time you get to fifteen units, right? Because twenty percent of the additional five.
I'm so glad you asked that question. I have a slide on that.
Okay, if you want, you can put that up there and I'll ask.
Okay, if we go three slides forward. There we are. Great. So sorry, blind, different glasses. Suppose a property has room for twenty one units. Twenty percent of twenty one is four point two affordable units. Currently, the fractional units rounds up, so you would be required to build five affordable units, but nobody would do that because your extra unit would be affordable. You wouldn't earn any profit off of it. You would just reduce the size of your project and build twenty units. We would get sixteen market rate units and four affordable units. Under the proposal, since a fractional payment in lieu is allowed, you would be required to build four affordable units and make a fractional payment in lieu of zero point two percent of that extra unit. So it would be advantageous to build all twenty one units that fit seventeen market rate and four affordable and to make the small payment into the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Now, if your question was, how is it that at ten units, at ten units, it's ten percent and at eleven units, it's twenty percent? And so the fractional amount you would have to pay would be at the twenty percent rate. That's true. We're not making a more detailed sliding scale than ten percent versus.
No, but I actually think that if you have twenty one units, if this worked like the IRS, you would need three affordable units plus the fractional dollars. In other words, the first ten are at a ten percent rate. And then the second ten and thereafter would be at a twenty percent rate. So what you're showing now is like the the thing of no one will ever build eleven units. Okay, ever, because you are penalized significantly to go from ten to eleven. If you follow the wisdom of the IRS, you would make the eleventh unit just simply at the twenty percent rate on top of the ten percent base of those first ten units. So you know, why create a cliff at ten units? You know, buildings are all different sizes. It's logical to put a certain number of apartments, you know, depending on the footprint of the building. So why suddenly make eleven like a drastic change where you need a full twenty percent affordable versus ten, where you only need ten percent affordable? Make it ten percent plus the twenty percent for the increment and therefore thereafter.
That's an interesting point you're making, and we will definitely give that some thought. Our thinking was that economies of scale change, the larger, so when you're building. It's just so it's similar, your question for the audience was at ten units exactly. This is similar to many zoning bylaw issues. Why do we limit the building height in a residential district to thirty five feet? And then you can build up to thirty five feet, but you can't build up to thirty five feet plus one inch. You have to pick with a variance or a special permit. However, actually, Elizabeth is shaking her head at me, and I'm going to trust her on that. But but my point is simply that we have to pick numbers for things. So you make an interesting point that we could make the incremental units be only the incremental units be at the higher rate. But our thinking and choosing the numbers and the percentages in the way we did is that there is a lot of overhead in building a project. You have to apply, you have to get all kinds of permitting, you have to go to endless planning board hearings and other hearings. And whether you're building one unit or a hundred units, you have to go through much of the same things together. And therefore, the larger the project, the more it's not so much we're taking away the penalty for small projects rather than penalizing large ones over what they have been currently.
Yeah, I just still think a cliff is, there are ways to round it, you know. So anyway, next point is the payment in lieu. So I have seen recent projects where, you know, it's presented to us the that the units are going to be, you know, eight hundred and fifty K or something like this. And that indeed is the the list price of the units. But then the buyers spec them out with finished basements and you name it. Blackbird, Blackbird two, some of these units ended up being a one and a half million dollars. So the question is, is the payment in lieu going to be based upon the net or the gross cost?
That is a great question. I don't know the answer, but I will find out before.
Think about.
Yes. Yes, there's a question online. Nathan, do you have the name?
Keith Bergman online.
Keith Bergman, please.
Hi, Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, speaking as the Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. First, we want to thank the Planning Board and the Select Board for updating and adopting a housing production plan for Concord, which establishes clearer goals and strategies for how we can increase affordable housing. And I'm and we're very pleased that the Planning Board is bringing forward to town meeting this year Article thirty five, which is is an excellent start at doing some problem solving and with the zoning bylaw to be able to add affordable units where none have been produced before. So the trust has unanimously voted to support Article thirty five. We think that it addresses the housing production plan goal to increase the variety of rental and ownership housing options, especially for families, particularly near transit stations and village centers. And we're pleased that it includes a provision for payments into the Affordable Housing Trust, e- even if it is that we we are the rounding error that where you have a place to to send the developer where there's a fraction of a unit that that wouldn't otherwise get built, that that there can be a financial value calculated and an amount deposited in the trust. So appreciate very much the the problem solving approach the Planning Board is taking. Some excellent questions being asked in the room there. And and I am confident that it will be a well thought out proposal that is brought to town meeting and thanks and thanks for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Bergman. Next, Tom.
Hi, I'm Carol Savoy, sixty one Belknap Street. Article thirty five is changing the zoning by reducing the amount of affordable housing required from current twenty percent to ten percent or less. So developers can build more large scale dense luxury housing all across Concord's four villages. If you thought the road business district was a bad idea last year, this article is throw business district repackaged in four times worse as it allows dense development, not just in pro business, but also in Concord Center, West Concord, Nine Acre Corner, and other areas. This zoning is being promoted as pro affordable housing. But in reality, it produces the affordable housing requirement from twenty percent to ten percent or less. This means developers will be incentivized to build luxury housing rather than much needed affordable housing. We need to ensure our community has enough affordable housing, and this zoning change will only make the problem worse. By reducing the requirement of affordable housing will become more difficult to meet the ten percent SHI by May twenty twenty three, which will open Concord up to unfriendly forty B proposals for developments that are not of the town's choosing. For example, the Route one seventeen forty B development in Sudbury could potentially be built in Concord. Furthermore, Article thirty three allows developers to pay a small fee instead of building a unit of affordable housing, which is not a fair trade for Concord. If this zoning change is implemented, developers could build around a hundred plus units in each of our four villages. That's about four hundred new families moving in, requiring services and schools, which could lead to a burden on schools and town sewer systems, which are already at capacity. If new sewer or expanded schools are needed, this will become a town expense, which will be covered by taxpayers. By reducing the affordable housing requirement, Article thirty five will encourage large scale dense luxury development that will forever change the character of Concord and our historic villages. As a community, we need to prioritize affordable housing by keeping the existing twenty percent affordable zoning to ensure that we are providing for those who need it most. Please vote no on Article thirty five. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Savoy. Is there anyone else online? I see a commenter ready to speak online. Mr. Feely, please.
Yes, Rich Feely, three forty seven Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation. And first, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for his thoughtful comment. And I hope we can, I think the cliff issue is potentially there, but I hope that won't delay us in passing this article. And I think the one kind of affordable housing that almost everybody could agree with is the kind of thing that goes on the second and third floors of retail space that we're going to have anyway. And we, Ms. Felshen gave the number, two units in thirteen years. You can't do it. And number two, I don't think this in any way encourages large luxury housing. We're probably going to have a forty B development anyway, but we certainly want units that are in town that are of varying sizes, are walkable to transit. And all this provides an incentive and some money for the housing trust to create more units. We don't get any money in the housing trust if no units are built under this existing provision. And we all know how the town feels about raising property taxes. So we need sources for affordable housing that don't come out of the property tax. So I I think this is smart. I would hope we pass it, and I would hope the Planning Board would think hard about Mr. Johnson's proposal because I think I'm not too worried because I think a lot of what we will see is less than ten units. But we certainly don't want the cliff effect, but that's not reason to wait and not pass this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feely. Comment in the room now.
Diane Proctor, fifty seven Sudbury Road. Thank you all for thinking all this through. I have just a point of information question. If I were a developer and I were building ten units and I decided I really couldn't build that one affordable unit, which would be ten percent, I can pay in lieu of that? Or only if it's a fraction, may I pay in lieu of that? And I just want to understand that distinction if I could.
Under this year's proposed amendment, you would only be allowed to make the payment in lieu if it's less than half a unit.
Less than.
Units, you would be required to build the full unit. In fact, if it's six, you would be required to build the full unit. Or but if it's four, you could pay point four.
Okay, thank you. So it's at six that that changes.
Five, actually, because point five is, it's only if it's less than point five.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's see, Mr. Cupka online, please.
Hi, thank you. Don Cupka, thirty nine Devon Street, and a member of the Finance Committee, but speaking for myself. I think we're, I think we're all aligned in the desire to have more affordable housing in town. And I think that putting it above single story retail makes a lot of sense. But I think that echo some of what's been said here. I think if if we're successful with this owning as it's currently drafted, we're not going to have more affordable housing in those locations instead of we're going to have more market rate units. So let's say for argument's sake, we built one hundred units of housing got built as a result of this, but they're all making a payment in lieu. We'd have some money, but we wouldn't have any more affordable units, and we'd be in fact ten units further behind toward our toward our goal. Ten units, meaning, you know, the ten percent affordability, those if one hundred units were built and none of them affordable. So I'm wondering if there is, just in your thinking through any other modifications that results, for example, Mr. Johnson made a great, great point. In thinking things through, is there a way to think about those one to four units where one unit is where the Concord Housing Authority participates or something of that sort? So that it get the project gets built and we wind up with affordable housing instead of just a some money in the bank, but no sites and no buildings being built. In fact, if we think about having distributed affordable housing throughout town, this is this could be a path to that. But not as it's currently drafted. That's my my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cupka. I I would like to point out that there are some circumstances under which we could slip down on our forty B ratio if there are large numbers of projects that provide fractional units that can be done through the payment in lieu. But first of all, I think it's, the board thinks it's extremely unlikely that there would be that many properties in town where this would be a possibility. We think we would be lucky with the change for the projects of ten or fewer units to get a handful of units in the next several years. And second of all, our housing production plan shows a great need, not And second of all, our housing production plan shows a great need not only for affordable housing, but also for small in-town market rate units for people who want to downsize or gain a foothold to return to town or for workforce housing. And therefore, the very small change in the forty B ratio would be worth the ability to gain some market rate units.
But I do want to clarify. The only time somebody can pay an in lieu fee is if there is a fractional unit less than point five. So if you had a hundred units and they're required to provide ten affordable units, they have to provide those affordable units. They don't have an option to pay an in lieu fee instead of creating those units. So I just want to make sure that's that's clear.
Yeah, it's not, it's not an either or, so.
No, I understand that. I didn't mean in a hundred unit project. I meant this is this we, but twenty-five unit projects of something.
Right, yes, there would have to be a large number of very small projects before it became an issue. And frankly, we should be so lucky to get that much in-town housing. I don't think that would happen. I see more questions in the room. Sir?
Yeah, I'm Steve Newmeyer at Belmont Street. So I read the housing production plan, and I've read a bunch of other studies and research. So I was hoping to get more data and more numbers of, you know, one thing I would think about is if you talk to a real estate developer, what's the return on capital under the current rules versus the new rules? And is there a big change? And what do the numbers look like? I talked to a friend who's a developer. I'm like, what does it cost to build around this area? So he said, you know, two hundred and fifty bucks a foot, thousand square foot apartment, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, then you have the cost of land. So the cost of land is a million dollars a lot. But if you rezone it to allow more building, the price of land goes up. So, you know, you can run through all the numbers and try to figure out what exactly do you expect the incentive to be? And what's the return on capital? And that's what I don't hear any numbers about that. So I'd love to get feedback on that. The one other comment I have is just on the long-term plan. I looked up UMass Donahue Institute, supported by M A P C. They forecast Concord's population to go up sixty-two people from two thousand twenty to two thousand thirty. After that, they forecast the population to decline. So that, you know, kind of got my attention. Then M A P C has two different scenarios. The status quo scenario, just keep doing what we're doing. And they said that would create economic stagnation. The problem is they me- measure economic stagnation as the growth size of the economy, counting population. To me, what I care about is economic growth per person. So there seems to be a political bias to we're losing people to Texas and Florida. And so we have to do something to grow our population. But from an environmental point of view, I think we have enough people. And if you look long term, the whole world population is going to peak soon. So when I dig into the data of smart growth and these terms that people use of vibrancy, when I look at the numbers in the data, I I don't find a lot of backing for it. And I'd just like to see more of that. You know, with smart growth, it seems to be the smart growth is the driver to have people live in town centers around train stations. Well, I look at all the studies for last twenty or thirty years. The objective is to get people to stop driving their cars because it creates pollution, which I understand is a problem. Electric cars are on the way. Hopefully, that solves the problem. But when I look at the data, as far as how much do people drive less, it's like four, five, six percent less. It's a rounding error. It works in the cities. People don't have a car. I lived in the city. I didn't have a car. I'm in the suburbs. How do I get around? So the the driving idea of smart growth in the suburbs doesn't seem to make sense to me. When I look at the data, if that's the objective. So maybe I'm being long-winded here, but I I just would like to hear like actual numbers of a developer. What's the return on capital?
We would thank you for your comments. We would have to see if anyone was willing to give us that information. In terms of the driver of this amendment, there may be a sustainability angle. But the primary driver is that we do not have housing diversity in Concord. And there is, in some cases, we have the choice to either, excuse me. When I say we, I mean, human beings have the choice to either move into a newly built house on some far-flung lot in Concord or to move to a smaller unit closer to the center of the town. And the idea is to have it be possible to move into a smaller unit nearer the center of the town in hopes that the far-flung lot would be then less desirable to develop.
I I looked at the data that M A P C publishes, and they show Concord as far as the mix of single-family homes versus multifamily homes versus two to four units compared to the average suburb. And we are better than the average suburb. So it's another way to measure the data is like, what's the objective long term? I mean, right now, we're better than the average suburb. But if you look at Sudbury, it's more single families. If you look at other towns, it's more single families. So do we? What's the percentage you want to have long term? What's what's the objective?
Thank you for your comment.
That's what it is now.
Ms. Hartman?
Hi, Mary Hartman, sixteen Concord Green, member of the Select Board, speaking for myself. To me, the main, first of all, thank you. What I'm always impressed with is the amount of detail and thoughtfulness that you've put into these types of articles. So thank you for that. If I boil this down to the way I'm understanding it, the reason we want to propose this is because the current bylaw is not enabling or incenting developers to develop what we'd like them to develop, and we're hoping this will. Have we spoken to developers, which is similar, I think, to the prior speaker's question, to actually ask them if this new bylaw will enable them to make money using under this bylaw? Otherwise, is or is this something that we're hoping will, and we're putting it out there and seeing if it works? I guess my question boils down to, do we actually talk to the people who are going to realize what we're hoping they do to see if this is in fact gonna work? That's my question.
That's an interesting question. As a new member of the planning board, I don't know if developers or our other property owners ever speak to the board itself. I don't know if Elizabeth has an answer about whether they.
Is there a reason why we don't?
I would imagine they don't want to reveal their personal private business information, but I do not have an answer for you.
No, it's, we don't have any. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Savoy?
Thank you, Ms. Felchon. I just wanted, I'm reading the zoning by law for the warrant and says for a developer including fewer than five dwelling units, a payment equal to at least ten percent of the average market sales price for all market rate dwellings in the subject development shall be made to Concord Municipal Affordable Trust or provide at least one affordable unit. So what that sentence says is that they can pay ten percent. Let's take the example Ned gave of eight hundred and fifty thousand, or we can say half a million. So they can pay ten percent of half a million dollars, which is fifty thousand dollars. Or they can give us one market unit. So if you're a developer, what would you do? Give a half a million dollar unit of affordable housing or pay fifty thousand dollars to Concord and make all your units five or more luxury or market rate housing? That that's what it says.
You you may have misspoken there. I believe you said pay a payment in lieu or build one market rate unit. That should be pay a payment in lieu or build one affordable unit.
Right.
Now, we don't expect that anyone would be likely to provide a full affordable unit when they would be allowed to make the payment in lieu, but we didn't want to preclude that from happening if somebody so chose.
Right. So what I'm saying is that you said, I think Diane asked this question, and you said, oh, no, it's only for partial in lieu of payments, but this is five units or less. People can say, I'm gonna, I don't want to build four affordable and one, I mean, one affordable and four market rate. So I'm gonna pay you fifty thousand dollars, and I'm gonna build five market rate units. Isn't that what this says?
If for a project of four units, you would be required to pay point four of a unit price, because that would be ten percent of four units. If you only build one unit, you would be required to pay point one percent, a tenth of a unit. So it's ten percent per unit.
No, this says for developer fewer than five units, so four units.
That's a good suggestion. We will make sure that the F A Q goes over the math on this, and we will clarify our presentation for town.
Yeah, and then you had a couple examples in your F A Qs, too. So you guys are calling affordable a hundred eighty percent, a hundred percent, and a hundred and twenty-one percent, a hundred and twenty percent of A M I. That's what you're calling affordable. So, but you're saying in the zoning by law that it's fifty percent. So you're saying, oh, give us twenty percent affordable, but you're saying fifty percent of the twenty percent, which is ten percent, is affordable that goes to S H I. The other ten percent goes to the hundred percent or a hundred and twenty percent, correct?
No.
Correct.
It would be the of those affordable units required to be constructed, fifty percent of them would need to. Of the ones that are constructed, fifty percent of them would need to be capital A affordable, so meet that eighty percent criteria. The remaining, the next twenty-five percent is the one hundred percent, and the last twenty-five is the one twenty, so that you get true truly affordable housing, which was not defined previously. And you attain workforce type housing that is more affordable in a Concord context.
I would like to clarify, I I just like to clarify that the current bylaw says lowercase a affordable. There is no requirement currently that the lowercase a affordable units go on the S H I whatsoever. So this would actually be producing more capital A affordable units.
Oh, is that true, Elizabeth? Because I think you said.
Oh, oh, no, Elizabeth, Elizabeth is saying we may have to run that by town council or something. No? Well, oh, oh, that will clarify it in the F A Q. All right. Yes.
Because when I asked Elizabeth that before, she said everything says twenty percent affordable. It doesn't say lowercase. It doesn't say uppercase. It just says affordable.
We've had some, we've been going back and forth on that recently and making some clarifications.
Sure. So getting back to this, where you say twenty percent, you want to put your example that up there. You said twenty, so the new proposed is twenty percent affordable, of which fifty of the twenty percent, which is ten percent, goes to S H I. Right? So today, twenty percent, we don't know, goes to, we, I thought it went to S H I today.
But no, not actually.
Okay, well, we'll find that out, because Elizabeth told me it was not defined.
So the current bylaw, the definition of affordable, there's three parameters. The first parameter to be affordable is that units that are for sale, no more than thirty percent of the household income can, you you can't have more than, well, I can read it to you about that. So this is under the definition in the zoning by law, section one point three point two, a dwelling unit that by deed restriction is and will remain A for sale and sold at a selling price that will result in an annual shelter cost, which for this purpose shall include, to the extent required by applicable federal, state, and local program, real estate taxes, insurance, and mortgage interest of not more than thirty percent of the annual household income of a qualified affordable housing unit purchaser. Or B, available for rent and rented, again, at an annual rent, which for the purposes shall include same language, state, local, federal, that will result in an annual shelter cost of not more than thirty percent of the annual household income of a qualified affordable housing unit tenant, and or C, a dwelling unit that qualifies, and that will be included on the S H I. So there's three levels. Under the current zoning, a developer can come in and he can propose the affordable units meet any one of those three. So thirty percent of a household income for a house that sells for five hundred thousand dollars is, it just has to be restricted, deed restricted, that that person can't make more than a certain amount, thirty percent. But so that doesn't make it automatically on the S H I. So there's no requirement.
Categories, so we could encourage them to put it on the S H I, just like the planning board does.
It would.
Somebody brings a proposal forward.
So it doesn't work, it doesn't work that way. So to be on the S H I, there's very strict requirements through the state and the fair housing market that somebody has to go through as far as the lottery and their income and their assets. And you would not be able to have a house that sells for five hundred thousand dollars. To have it be included on the S H I, it wouldn't work that way. So the developer gets to choose.
Developer to encourage them to make it S H I compliant.
So that get, that's why the current bylaw isn't being used. It's it's financially, it 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 doesn't work. So the current, the current zoning by law does not require any of the units to be on the, be included on the S H I.
Okay. That's news to me. Before you told me it didn't define it, so I'll I'll read that.
It it defines what affordable housing is. The bylaw does not define how many units need to be at what A M I.
Okay.
So the proposal is to define them.
Okay. The other point I wanted to bring up is your two examples here. One was the thirteen B Commonwealth Act. So the, you said they're looking to increase the project to twenty units and saying now it would have to be twenty percent or for affordable, but really, it would be ten percent of the the twenty percent affordable. So we'd only get two S H I units out of that example in the proposed changes. Then we'd get two at a hundred percent or one at a hundred percent, one at a hundred and twenty, right?
That is correct. Whereas if they were to build it with twenty units under the zoning by law without this amendment passing, they would be required to provide the same for lowercase a affordable housing units, and none of them would have to appear on the S H I.
Uh, depends how it's divided up as as Elizabeth described.
Well, they, but they wouldn't have to be, because they would have their choice. They could take either of the other two options, A or B, to provide the housing at the thirty percent of income level or rent.
But I'm just saying, your example, I think you should further define it, because it sounds like we're getting four S H I units and we're only getting two in that one.
That's a good point. Yes, we should clarify that.
Getting a hundred and twenty and the same on your example of twelve units. That would be also, I think, better to explain to folks what they're actually getting.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Great.
I don't see, ah, I do see another commenter. Please come forward.
Robin Garrison, fifty-three Middle Street. Just, I have a couple of questions and then a comment. I want to make sure I understand this. So this change means that there's only going to be a change in the amount of affordable housing required for you for eleven units or under.
Ten or under.
Okay, ten or under. So eleven or under just stays the same, because we already are want twenty percent.
Yes, except there's the minor detail of for the ones that are eleven or larger, for a fractional unit that's less than half a unit, just that small fraction can be done through a payment in lieu, but it does not change the percentage.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. Now, my next question or point is, in all. In all of this language, you want to require a mix in the number of bedrooms in all units. So you want to have a good mix of like two bedroom, one bed. Are you gonna quantify that?
So there are several places in the zoning bylaw already that use the same language about a mix in number of bedrooms. And the planning board would use the exact same, uh, um. Execution in the zoning board of appeals for this as for that, where it already applies.
Where it already applies. Is Elizabeth telling me what that is, what that number is, or?
No, so you can't really define, um, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you're saying like, you know. Ten have to be one bedroom, ten have to be. So you really could not define that because each project. Is gonna be different.
Right.
Um, so it would be during that special permit process.
Okay.
Um, or during the permitting process that either, you know, the planning board or the board of appeals, depending on who is the permit granting authority. Would have that conversation, uh, with the developer on, on what is an appropriate mix.
Okay, um, so it's subjective based on the. The town.
Yeah, and, and it could, you know, if they could want to have, you know, a couple of, you know, larger units. And depending on what their business idea was down below, maybe there's going to be a daycare. So let's have a, you know, let's have a couple more larger units. So it really would depend on a project specific basis.
Okay. With that in mind, do you really need to put that language in the proposal?
We think so because. As currently written, you can provide all studios or all three bedroom units and the planning board of this, uh, uh, or the C B A would have no basis whatsoever for saying, no, no, we want a mix.
Okay.
Here, there is at least some requirement for a mix.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I see Mr. Galis online.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Swashin. Thank you for the enlightening explanation. I understand more of this complicated, uh. Uh, zoning modification than I did at the beginning of the meeting for sure. I have a, a clarification question, which I don't necessarily need an answer now, but I just wanted to point out something that's confusing to me. So in the first paragraph of the proposed amendment. It talks, it deals with developments, including more than ten dwelling units. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Just, yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, and, um, it says, um. In the wording and the second half of that paragraph, it talks about, um. Uh, dwelling units and affordable dwelling units. So the word units is used. And in two different senses at least. And then it comes to the end and it says, if based on the foregoing, a fraction of the unit above zero point five is required. The unit requirement shall be rounded up to require an additional whole unit. Uh, I'm not sure if that applies to both. The dwelling units, use of the word unit and the affordable units. I, I, I don't know. But that question occurs to me. Second, if based on the foregoing, a fraction of a unit below zero point five is required, a payment equal to the average market sales price for all market rate units. Uh, may be made instead. Is that correct? Or is it a percentage of the average market sales price? Because if the average market sales price of the market rate units was one point five million dollars, is that asking for? A payment of one point five million dollars if a fraction of a unit below, below zero point five is required? So these are wording clarifications, either for now or later.
Thank you. On the second one, um, the price is based on the average market sales price. But the way it is based upon it is fractionally as defined in the bylaw. And, um, the first question was on the difference. So. Unit is short for dwelling unit. Um, we can check if there is any, uh, uh. Legal force in that, and if so, tweak the language, but I don't believe that that will be a problem because. An affordable dwelling unit is an affordable unit and a dwelling unit is a unit.
Okay, but I'm just saying that, uh, you, I, I just wanted to raise these two questions for someone to. Take a closer look at, and again, in the, in the last sentence of the paragraph, it does say. A payment equal to the average market sales price, and I'm not sure if that's exactly what's intended.
Thanks for pointing that out. We'll make sure that that's okay and fix it if not.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bader.
Thank you. Thank you, Stefan Bader. I'm a member of the Concord Housing Authority, but I'm speaking on my own behalf tonight. I just want to say thank you for the work and the thought that you've put into this. Um, and I appreciate it. I endorse it wholeheartedly, but that's not the reason for the hearing tonight. The reason for the hearing tonight is to point out, as you did very well. That what we have now is not working. Two units. In over a decade is not working and we can talk about whether technically we're reducing the requirement or not. But zero times five percent, ten percent, twenty percent is still zero. So thank you for bringing this article forward. I would also add, since I see Mr. Johnson standing up, that reminded me, thank you, Matt. I would argue against worrying about a cliff. And a step rate like the IRS. This is not the IRS. This is. A situation where the town needs money for housing. It's got to come from somewhere. I doubt that a developer. Is going to decide whether to build ten units or eleven units or twelve units based on whether those last units. Or all of them are at twenty percent. He's gonna look at what he can sell. He's gonna look at what fits on the lot, what fits in the size, what fits in those, in the bedroom mix. That's not going to be a deterrent from going ahead with the project, in my humble opinion. And if there's a developer who disagrees with me, I'd like him to show me the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winter Street. I've been working on a spreadsheet here. Um, the, the problem is that, uh, screen sharing is disabled, uh, so I can't bring it up on the Zoom. But, um, what it appears to me is, let's just assume that the market rate units are, um, million dollars. So, uh, you build one unit, you pay a hundred thousand, right? Two units, you pay two hundred, three, three hundred or four hundred thousand. Five units, you build a unit. Okay, so that's all fine. You get up to, to ten units, you build, you still just build a unit all the way from five through to ten. You get to eleven. You build two affordable units and you pay two hundred thousand. Okay? You get to twelve units, you pay two, you build two units and you pay four hundred thousand. You get to thirteen units, you build three affordable units. You know that? Three affordable units. At thirteen units. Okay, and then you get up to sixteen units. Or fifteen units. Uh, yeah, uh, sorry. You get up to, sorry, uh, twenty, uh, you build four units at eighteen. Four affordable units. So I'm just trying to make sure you know. When you're causing someone to build more affordable units. Okay, just, that's why I get back to this IRS thing, because it is a sudden acceleration. I don't know that you intended that when someone built thirteen units, that three would have to be affordable.
Well, that is already the case.
No, I thought you were trying to make this easier.
Well, we are, but we're also trying to write a bylaw that people can understand that does not contain an algebraic expression.
Well, there, there is algebra, okay, even with your formula. Okay, so just checking.
Thank you. Mr. Bader again?
Thank you again. I think what we forget about when we get too hung up on the viability of any one particular unit and any one particular project. Is what we can do with that payment in lieu. And that payment in lieu can help build something. In partnership with, oh, I don't know, Habitat for Humanity. Where. Two, uh, two tenths of a billion dollar plus affordable unit. Gets you. An affordable habitat house. If it's in a duplex on, say, nine, ten Main Street, so. You, you can, the. The capital that's required to do other kinds of affordable units. Not necessarily in a new development, not necessarily in a big development, but a conversion. Of a. Single-family affordable Cape or affordable, take the affordable out. A single-family Cape Cod-style house into a duplex, you could do with the fraction that you get from. Not reducing the IRS steps. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Bader. Ms. Savoy?
Um, I just had a question. Is this a two-thirds vote or a simple majority vote, um, at town meeting this year? I know there was some confusion about this last year, so I thought we'd try and get ahead of it, so we understood that before we got to town meeting this year.
Two-thirds, Ms. Hughes is advising me.
I'm sorry, it's.
Ms. Hughes is advising me. It's a two-thirds vote. Oh, town council has opined. It's a two-thirds. Town council has given an opinion that it is a two-thirds vote.
Oh, it's a two-thirds vote.
That's what town council says.
Excellent, thank you.
Well, if town council says it, it must be so. I see no, oh, I do see a comment online and, uh, Mr. Patel.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Prashat Patel, three ninety-seven Sudbury Road. I, I want to go back to what a gentleman a couple of commenters ago said. Can you clarify that last sentence? So if based on the. Uh, foregoing, a fraction of a unit below point five is required. A payment equal to the average market rate. So if the fraction is at point two. And the average market rate is a million. Is it? Two hundred thousand that's expected to be paid or is it a million? Because the way it's currently wording, it's a million. Is that what the real intent is?
I believe that was Mr. Galis's question and I assure you, we will be looking at the exact language and figuring out that out and we will modify it if needed.
Well, what's the intent though? I'm sure you're gonna look at the language, but what's the intent?
The intent was for it to be ten percent, uh, excuse me, based on the percentage of the fractional unit of the market. Price for a unit. So if it was a million dollar unit, ten percent of that would be. A hundred thousand dollars or twenty percent of that would be two hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
I see a question from, um, Ms. Parteney. Who is muted, I believe.
Hi, thank you, thank you. I just want to add one minor comment. Yes, uh, Tanya Galis for this, sixty-two Prescott Road, thank you. Um, I, I would like to just make a comment that. It, it would be great if, uh, developers themselves, once in a while, just come and share. Uh, their positions with us, that we did not have to either guess because of. What the situation is in the market or, or only hear from the planning division where they presumably. Have communications with. I think, I think this is involving the whole town. It is, uh. You know, a complex issue. And, uh, I, I think we are owed a little more transparency about what goes on behind this whole process. That has always been my opinion. So I just wanted to put that in the mix here. Otherwise, thank you very much for your very diligent work and presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Galis. Seeing no one in the room and no one on Zoom. I believe that concludes the presentation on Article thirty-five. Thank you.
And that concludes the public hearing. Thank you very much.